And we are live with the recording, ready when you are.
Okay, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We could have roll call, please.
Yep. Commissioner Witcher?
I will not be here this evening.
Vice Chair Wydilla?
Here.
Commissioner Mamoney?
Yeah.
Commissioner Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Chair Staffordson?
Here.
Commissioner Allen? Okay, we have a quorum.
Okay, at this time, we will do pledge allegiance. Duncan will be leading.
Quits allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Looking out, I can see an empty chair is here. I don't think there's any comment there. Did we have any comments turned in? For this evening's meeting?
To our knowledge, we did not have any comments turned in. There may be a city councillor or two who has expressed an interest in at least following the proceedings, but we'll see if they join the meeting later.
Okay. All right, and with that, we will go into minutes. Everyone receive a copy of the minutes from January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And take it away, Commissioner Wilcox.
Okay, we got a couple of minor ones, actually. I missed that meeting, so I'll be abstaining from approval, but I did listen to the audio of the entire meeting. But as far as the actual written minutes, only got two. Let me see here. Page nine. I don't know if you want to follow along or not. Chris did get a copy of my corrections. I don't know if you have it with you or not.
One moment. I think councillor Lance is about to join the meeting too, just for the record. Okay, Commissioner Wilcox, I think we have them up on the screen for you, so.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm looking at in front of me. Okay, on page nine, it's actually pretty self-explanatory. Line four, Glenn Otto, Glenn was misspelled, should be two N's. And on page eleven. Line three, numeral seventy-five should be followed by either the apostrophe for foot or the word foot. Before hotel. That's all I had for January twenty. Thank you.
Any other corrections or edits to the minutes of January twenty? Just Commissioner Mamoney?
Yes, just a very small one on page eight. The middle paragraph where they started with my last name. Four lines from the bottom, it says, he worries that if they don't think outside the box initially, then there's a comma, I will remove that by and add a but, but only, I would add also add only, and then the focusing, we can leave it as a focusing or say focus, and that will be it. So, remove that by, add but, only, focusing, and then we'll be okay.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other corrections? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, January twenty, twenty twenty-one. As amended.
As amended, great. Second for that?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. As amended, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. And we have one abstain. All right. And moving along to meeting minutes for March tenth. March tenth, oh, you guys are good.
Well, we were a little behind, but we got caught up.
Okay. And I'm gonna say Commissioner Allen has joined us, let the record show that, and take it away, Commissioner Wilcox.
Have your comments pulled up, Commissioner Wilcox, too?
Okay. Excuse me. A page four, line two, T H E N should be T H A N. And on the very last line of this last paragraph. I kind of question where Mr. Mamoney came up with that seventy-nine thousand figure, so.
Yes, of course, if I may, two things, one, obviously, you know me a little bit now, I speak in high parables, like we do in Italy where I come from. Second, it was really an imaginary number. What I mean is that if there is a population of hundred thousand or eighty thousand, and even one thousand come and complain, comply, complain about something, or want something, the ninety percent that don't show up at the council meeting or the planning commission meeting should also be considered. We cannot just listen to the hundred or two hundred of the others. So, there was, the intent was to say exactly that, that, yeah, there is a voice, obviously, but we don't know if there's anecdotal data. What about the gray majority did not show up or did not comment? We also have to be attentive of that. So, wherever, anywhere you want to fix that is fine within. In some respect, it is also relevant if you want to remove it. I don't mind.
Yeah, that was kind of my understanding from the context, but it's just kind of a excessive figure for a perceived population of sixteen thousand.
Yeah, so I would say put fifteen thousand, and all food included, the majority to the people who aren't at the meetings. That's the intent is exactly that, so.
Right, right.
Remove the number instead including the people who aren't at the meetings.
Yes, yep, sure, fair enough, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then, on page five. Line three, the two ratios, two to one and three to, or two to one and one to three. Wasn't exactly clear what those referred to. So, maybe Chair Staffordson, since he was being quoted, you could expand on those, maybe? Talking about parking ratios, park parking requirements, I assume, for apartments?
Yeah, and it's going from two point one to one point three.
What does that mean, two point one to one point three?
It wouldn't be two point.
No, I'm just taking a look at this here.
I think I believe it was.
Are you talking about the, the one, the one parking space for guest parking for every three units?
Yeah. So, not only we're going, we're going from two to one, and we're eliminating the one for every three.
The guest parking requirement.
Okay.
I think probably just for an editor's suggestion, what you could just say, we'd be going from two point three three to one.
Yeah.
Because that's really the, what this actionist would be proposing to do if written according as presented.
Right, okay, so we'll edit that to that. It's basically saying the same thing, we're going from two point three three spaces to one.
Yeah, and I would address it most easily. Okay. Page six. Last line. The word that should be than, T H A N. And see, page six, the last paragraph, there's an extra A in the first line. Page seven, this appears a couple of times, actually, in the minutes. TCAP, I think that was misunderstood by the transcriptionist. I assume it's supposed to be TCAP, the Town Center Advisory Board.
Correct.
Yeah, that reappears again on page eight. Third line down. Caught up with me? Okay. My next page, page eight. About a little below the middle of the paragraph. There's a than, T H A N, that should be a T H E N. And page nine. Last line here, H E R E, should be her, H E R. And on page ten, I wanted to clarify that I was referring to councillor Craddock. Maybe add the word metro in front of councillor. Some people might know that full title. That's all I have for that one, thank you.
Hey, any other corrections or edits to the minutes of March tenth? Okay, motion to approve?
I move approval, let's correct it.
Okay, second for that?
Second.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as amended. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was good. All right, we are moving along here, and we are into.
All right, this is a continuation of your discussion that we began last month, and it also, again, is kind of an offshoot of some of the stuff that was brought up in your February meeting, that was your three-city planning commission meeting from the Halsey Street effort. But really, this, this effort in particular is derived from the immediate council correction to staff, and ultimately to you all, to help establish a new zoning district for the confluence site. While we're doing that, we thought it was also of interest for us to look at the other two mixed-use zoning districts, mixed-use light zoning districts that we currently have in the city, which include the central business district, which is basically downtown. And then, what we call the mixed-office housing, that's more of the peripheral stuff, where it's largely more residential focused, but does allow some commercial opportunities there. So, we wanted to look at those three zoning districts holistically. We showed last month that it was included in your packet this month, too, kind of how those zoning districts could interact with each other based on what you would want to potentially do for the confluence site. And where, in some cases, a use may be appropriate in the confluence site, but maybe less so in downtown or in the peripheral areas. So, we wanted to make sure you guys could see that visually from that. What we've included in this month's packet as opposed to last month is kind of a very rough start on kind of what the language would look like, that was the first attachment in your packet. How it would actually look in the code, just to get it started, not complete yet. The second item was an updated chart, which showed not only the three zoning districts, which included the confluence site, but also the iterations of it, so basically before and potentially after look at it. And then, we also included the maps that we had previously in the same packet, so I see Mr. Mamoney just put it on screen briefly, but those maps largely remain the same. Tonight, what we wanted to do was see if you had a chance to go over it a little bit more, think about it a little bit more. As we start preparing for a text amendment and map amendment to establish the zoning district and to apply it for the first properties, which would be effectively the city-owned confluence property within the urban renewal area. What we wanted to also do tonight is focus on two little items here on the slideshow here, which I'm about to pull up. And that is to get some clarification as far as what some of these definitions are, and to make sure that we cover any loose ends, so. One of the things we noticed when we were doing comparisons of the zoning districts is we had a couple of definitions that exist out there that weren't defined. Or that may need some better defining. And that's the ones that you see here, kind of on this list, as far as what we should do or how we need to better define them. The other thing that we need to do tonight as well is to look at some of the uses that are defined, but we didn't include in this list, to make sure that either they should be included in the list, or if they can be nested within a broader definition on that. So, those are kind of the little homework I'm hoping to clarify for you tonight. As well as to have any sort of other general discussion or concern from your read of the packet, your consideration of what we talked about last month. And to see where we go with it tonight. So, with that, I'll be happy, Mr. Chair, to kind of take some initial thoughts or questions before we dive into the specific definitions, to make sure we have those correct.
Okay. Anyone want to start?
There are two things that caught my attention right off. One of them I already brought to my attention, the large entertainment venue. I was wondering about the visibility of a multiplex-type operation, because they require such a large parking space, parking lot. The other one I noticed that's new to me is the fueling stations. I was wondering if, you know, I think of a gas station like a Chevron, but couldn't the fueling station also be a charging station for electric vehicles? Like, I would expect that to be actually encouraged in the confluence site.
On the latter one, yes, that's why we're calling it fueling station, not necessarily gas station, because of that possibility.
Aren't those typically tied to parking more than fueling?
Not necessarily, I mean, they can be, but there are some places that create basically these charging centers, which almost look like gas stations, but they happen to be centers, so if that is a dedicated thing, that's not affixed to a parking space, but rather a collection of like eight or ten charging stations resembles, resembles that.
You've got four of them at the factory outlets right now.
With four more on the way.
Yeah.
And I can, I can wait to address the larger, the large entertainment complexes, I'm sure that'll come up again. If that's all right, I'll defer.
Okay. Was that everything, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yeah, that's good for now.
Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Mamoney?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a very brief statement here, it is probably just a philosophical approach to what we do. I wonder if there is value, I know we had to, of course, give some direction, what users, what business are affordable or not. But I wonder if, like Chris was discussing before, if there is an opportunity at times to create a larger umbrella under which some users might be or might not be available, because to be overly specific could work as a double-edged sword for us. I mean, it's very clear when there's a usually you don't want to, is but if it's not listed, then there is an argument that might potentially allow the possibility for unwelcome users to seep underneath the kind of line. So, maybe a larger umbrella might offer a situation, a possibility where there is an argument from the commission or from the council saying, yeah, I know listed there, because we don't, we understand a larger umbrella, but those users are antithetical to what we're trying to produce. So, I don't know exactly putting terminal in tangible way, but maybe I'm approaching that one, maybe not every time. But that was also the suggestion or the statement that Chris just made. I don't know if it's an opportunity for us to go in that direction, but maybe.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Prickett, you're awfully quiet.
I don't know.
Okay. All right. Anything? I was wondering about densities.
For the density, and I'll refer you to kind of the more draft-like section of the packet here, give me one moment, I can pull it up here for this on screen here, so we have it. I think after a year of doing this, I'd be faster, I'm sorry. All right, can everyone see this okay? Should look like the code, okay? There is, at least for a placeholder, I mean, it certainly can change, or at your discretion if you wish, but for right now, we have a maximum and minimum density for residential, anyway. What we call exclusively residential uses shall be the same as the CBD, Central Business District density standard. It's a starting point. And then, the CBD standard. Which I'm sure you're going to be asking about, I have to go back and verify that real quick. Give me one moment. And Amber, I mean, and Rea, feel free to offer an assist if you happen to know it by heart. You guys look at the code a lot more than I do these days, or more regularly, I should say.
I can, I can share you my screen if you like, because I'm looking at the CBD section of our code right now.
Yep, go ahead and bring it up, thank you, Rea.
Are you able to see the code?
Yep.
We're looking exactly into the density requirement, right?
Right.
And setbacks. I don't address. We don't call them out in here.
We don't call out setbacks, we'll get to that in a little bit as to why.
Okay.
Yeah, so residential density in CBD is a little, it's less quick, and it really depends on the application and the approval itself, too, and we need to review that based on the proposed location and use. As you can see, there are different sections within the density criteria in our code.
Are you able to zoom in just a little bit more through the PDF?
Yes, of course. I'm looking at my big screen, so I apologize. It's big for me, but it's not big for you guys.
So, on the, on the first item there. That equates roughly to what your density is right now for an A-two unit, if we're talking about kind of a fifteen-hundred square foot allowance. So, it matches basically your highest residential density at the moment, too. That you allow in your multifamily residential zoning district.
This option.
Or fifteen hundred feet, sorry, the fifteen hundred foot requirement.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rea, you're sorry.
Oh, I was going to say number three is when it's exclusive residential development.
Right.
And that's the density calculation, so that's why I mean that it really depends on the proposal itself, too, and how we calculate density in the CBD.
This is one, Mr. Chair, we left it a little bit vague, and deliberately so, because I think what we were trying to do, rather than try to plan for every potential dimensional aspect of prospective development for that property. We didn't want to try to over-regulate or accidentally regulate ourselves out of development potential, creativity, or opportunity. So, in some ways, the vagueness was a little bit intentional, because we don't really know. We don't have an idea of a potential layout of the site, since we're not expecting just a big honking building to come there, we think it'll be probably a neighborhood-based situation. So, in the meantime, as a placeholder, we felt that the next best thing was probably to attach it to something that's somewhat familiar, but also has a little bit of discretion as far as what could be accomplishable on that front.
Okay.
And that also holds true for setback standards. The one, the one standard that I think we did want to make sure we get, we got memorialized was the height, because that has an obvious visual impact. And the building size suggestion, that a footprint of a building itself should not exceed sixty thousand square feet on a physical piece of property. Now, if it has multiple stories, of course, it could exceed sixty thousand, but that way, you're not developing a huge block necessarily, which could take up acreage. Now, sixty thousand was just an initial offer, you could expand it. But expand it at your own risk, because there are maybe uses out there that you would prefer not to have there that are above sixty thousand, but maybe you would rather not see. And as always, if there is a use that's out there that exceeds that number, they can always request a variance or or some other relief from that, from that standard. But that way, we set an expectation, and again, sixty thousand, you're talking about about an acre and a half in size, a city block in Troutdale is about an acre in size, so that's a good frame of reference.
Right, so if we look at what we would potentially be allowing with a sixty thousand square foot building would be some of the uses that you were putting up a few minutes ago.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Chris? Chris, this is Paul.
Yeah.
Wanted to comment on the sixty thousand square foot. I found out recently, I was trying to get a handle on, you know, what that actually looked like, and I known already that the new seasons in Happy Valley is fifty thousand, and I found out just recently that the Cherry Park Safeway is fifty-five thousand. So, that gave me a good idea of what a sixty thousand foot footprint looks like.
Yeah, that threshold, we've seen it before in a few other spots, that suggests that you could have like that medium form format grocery store, but maybe not a club store or a supercenter, like you would say with a large Fred Meyer or Walmart or anything like that. Not to single out those two companies, but I'm actually looking at the chair, because he's kind of more in that industry, he might be able to advise it better.
Probably, you know, a large conventional store is going to be forty to about fifty-five. Something like a Fred Meyer or Walmart, Supercenter, those are going to be over a hundred. And neighborhood stores can be as low as eight up into the twenties. But sixty for that location is a pretty big, could be a pretty big unit.
Right. We looked, one of the likely uses that seems to have gained a lot of traction, at least from an economic interest, and I think the interest of council, was potentially a lodging facility, like a hotel. That certainly, you know, if we're talking about just footprint, a hotel can also be largely accomplished with a footprint of sixty thousand, even if you're going up multiple stories and ultimately have more.
Be an awfully big hotel.
It could be. But it's accomplishable, I guess that's what we say.
Okay. Okay, so.
One, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One of the things that we heard also from you all last month was the concern about the height thresholds that we had identified, we had called one like the standard height, and then kind of you can go up twenty feet, we removed the word standard, because I think that was throwing some confusion. So, if you look at height, and then kind of you can go up 20 feet, we removed the word standard, because I think that was throwing some confusion. So if you look at item C there on the bottom of your screen, building heights up to, we just said, up to 55 feet shall be a type 2 site development review. And then anything else would be a type 3, which is at the, the top of the next page, if you can scroll down, Rhea. So just to clarify that we have two high thresholds, we're not calling one standard or the other, it's just the thresholds are within. On setback, we did kind of do an initial guess on it. We didn't want to get too far in the weeds, but really talking about building sites and how they may relate to the street, or to a park or a trail, what we were trying to establish and kind of then was a little bit of a small-town feel perspective. If you wanted to potentially build up to a property line, you could do so, which is common in a commercial area, you could have potentially zero foot setbacks. If you want to go above 35 feet, so really, we're talking about above three stories, there would be an expectation of a setback that would have to occur. That just helps with the feeling of a general community or design principles, that higher you go, the more constrained the public environment could be, if you're, you're kind of in a street that is surrounded by that, and keeping a appropriate comfortable ratio can be better accomplished if you allow, if you go taller to step it back, or to have a deeper setback. Helps with, with not feeling claustrophobic or constrained by, by the built environment. Can you go back to the first page again, Rhea? One other note that is going to look different from this section as opposed to other ones, we are experimenting with the idea of maybe incorporating the use table that you see to make it an exhibit within the code. So unlike other sections where you have permitted uses, conditional uses, and you have a whole bunch of uses listed on one page, we're suggesting refer to a table where you can, much like you have.
For each zone.
For each zone, or potentially for several zone groupings, and that way you can quickly identify if something is permitted, specific standard, conditional use, or if it's not permitted. This will also help, by the way, with clearly delineating what would not be allowed. There's oftentimes questions as far as, is this allowable? It's not really listed. This also helps to better define what you don't want to see in a particular zoning district. So say mobile home, manufactured home part, or marijuana facility, some of the uses that probably you're not going to be desirable at that location, you can very clearly and quickly say, no, in that table. And as you can see, this is kind of what, what a table could look like. It may be formatted, of course, differently for the code itself, but I think this is a very quick and easy way for us to, as staff, and frankly, for people looking to, looking and doing due diligence on projects, for them to quickly identify if something is allowed or not allowed.
Okay, we have some residential uses not included in MU1. Now, can we do that?
That are not included?
Yeah. I know it's not zone residential. But are any of the multis going to be pushed back on?
No, it's a commercial zoning district as it stands right now, so no. And again, this was, this was an initial effort.
Chris, just, just a brief comment if I may. I know this is very early draft, I'm very fine with everything I see, just, just one thing, because that is the way my brain works. We, we've been using the word permitted, 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 permitted. So I'm making an assumption that no would be not permitted, correct? I wonder if we could write that, no permitted, instead of introduce another way to say things. So if it is permitted, then could we say no permitted? So we, we remove every possibility of interpretation, misconstruction, and
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Yep. And I know, this is only draft, if, if it seems wonderful, I recognized it from last time, and great. Yep, thank you.
My, my, my four-year-old son uses the word no a lot, so I can use this program to fill in, no.
Yeah, I, I used to, I used to read it 15 years, 20, 16 years ago too, but now I have evolved. Thank you, appreciate.
Of course. And, yeah, it was a good segue, and thank you, Rhea, for bringing up the chart, that was effectively your next attachment here, which again, from the chart you had last time we ran, which just showed the prospective zoning, we also included the existing situation of CBD and for MOH. And again, really, the focus of tonight is that last column on the right, when we highlighted, that is going to be the text amendment application that would be going first. But again, we felt it was important to show the other two zoning districts in relation to that, so you have a good feel for what could be allowed in some area, or permitted, I should say, and what might be conditional or not allowed in another.
And when you're thinking cottage cluster, what do you think?
Cottage cluster generally is smaller dwelling units, usually clustered around a central green apartment area. It was somewhat of a popular building type about 100 years ago. We don't really have too many examples. There are a few in, in Northeast and Southeast Portland in particular. Usually they are larger lots, and then basically you have these smaller units clustered around a common area. It's, it's an interesting housing prototype, and it's probably not appropriate in a downtown, certainly not in a mixed-use, a larger mixed-use setting, where you're trying to encourage density.
Okay.
And what do you mean by age restricted housing?
Well, that was, the other topic we had talked about was the idea, or last month was the idea that you have typically apartments or condominiums or whatever, but have a deed restriction that says 55 and over can live here, or at least one person has to be 55 and over. But one that does not require any, any, it's not, it's not managed care, it's not assisted living or anything, it's straight apartments or condominium living typically. So with that, with that covenant.
So like along that same line, you've got accessory dwelling units permitted with special standards, like what, what ADUs would you be looking at down there? Where are you going?
I think you look at an example like what we have in Lancaster Park, where you have, for instance, a townhome development, but built within the townhome on the ground floors and accessory dwelling unit, where it's almost pre-programmed into the building. So in, in those cases, it could be a very efficient way to increase your density without having to really physically make a huge difference, or eat up a lot of real estate to get it. But that is becoming a trend we're seeing, is the idea that you can have an ADU built within a, or intended right away upon construction, not for conversion. And those special standards are already baked into your development code. We require a type 1 review for that.
Right. But I know down there, they want, you know, they'd like to see more homeownership, and I wouldn't imagine most of the ADUs would be owner-occupied, they'd probably be renters.
Probably, or in some cases, they could be multi-generational households, or some things like that, but it might be, it might provide a way to also encourage housing affordability, without creating a situation where you're looking at a complex that is by deed income restricted. It basically provides the housing need that your analysis says you need to have, but it's baked into an effectively into a mixed-income situation, because presumably, you're going to be attracting medium to higher-end, likely higher-end housing in that, in that area of the city.
I think that would be the base plan. So I guess I come back to the direction, are we trying to open it up going age-restricted and some of the other things? Is that the purpose?
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
Where I mean, there's been a lot of talk of higher-end homeownership, things of that nature down there, condo, townhouse, that type of thing. So if we're going like age-restricted housing, that would probably be income-restricted housing.
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. So you're just trying to open it up for more opportunities?
Well, I think what we're saying is age-restricted housing, if we do have a development code, amendment for that could, and I stress could, because it's not in, it's not approved yet, but typically you see a lower parking need, because you see typically lower trips generated, or you have a lesser need for the recreational or amenities space, because you're not accounting for a playground. They have, in other words, basically less impact, because age-restricted homes generally are one or two bedrooms at most, if you wanted a spare bedroom. It has a smaller impact on the community. You're not impacting schools, because you're not having kids in these types of units, so that's why some communities specifically call it out, and in some cases, developers will pursue that.
Pursue that avenue?
Yeah, doesn't mean that they will, but this provides them another way to accomplish housing. And again, senior housing needs were also called out in your, in your housing needs analysis.
Yeah, they're, they're basically, those communities that you've seen, 55 and up communities, those are age-restricted housing. They, they're not necessarily nursing homes or assisted living, it's just the clause is that you have to be 55 and up to be a resident, and it would be catered towards anyone who's 55 and up, so there's the fitness, there might be fitness centers, but not a playground, or there's a community center in the middle to provide like a meeting space for the residents to stay in.
Okay. So it's more like a chariot complex.
They're really fun. I lived in Florida, and my in-laws stay in one, and they love it, so it's not as it's, it's, it's a different lifestyle, I guess. It's a lifestyle choice for a lot of aging residents to still feel independent and downsize their homes, from the homes that they probably have, and to have a smaller square footage, and being able to interact with other neighbors more easily.
And it's, it's a good way to kind of, like you said, transition as you move along in life. Okay.
I should add too, since we're talking about that, and you probably see the yellow highlights, the, the yellow highlights indicate new concepts that are not currently in the code. So for instance, quadplex and cottage cluster, that's not in the code right now, but we expect it will be because of House Bill 2001, we're going to have to have those definitions. Age-restricted was a topic that we, we began discussing last month, so that's why it's in there. And when you see yellow across those zoning districts, it means that it was not clear to us as a staff how it should be treated, so those are suggestions of how you should treat it. And again, in the case of the rightmost column, the column that we're most concerned with tonight, making sure we get right, because we'll probably revisit the balance of the chart, everything's in yellow or that lighter shade, because it's all being newly applied to that, that zoning district.
Okay.
And I just want to add on the House Bill 2001, the state just updated some of the discussions that they have as of two days ago. And they had published a large-city model code that Chris and I and Amber will take a look at before presenting to you. Quadplex, cottage clusters are one of the callouts that they require, and they put in the model code. So there, there will be more discussions about quadplex and cottage clusters, and how it will fit into Troutdale.
Chris, I have a question concerning quadplex versus townhouses, for example. You can have, you know, five or six attached units in a townhouse building, so how do you address that?
I think it comes down to property lines, just, Mr. Wolfpacks, I think what, what they're suggesting with a quadplex is you could have a quadplex that is individually partitioned into four unique properties, either through a condo flat or whatever other plating, or it could be on one. A townhouse has to be on an individual lot. It's basically a zero-lot line, single-family home.
Okay, got it.
Rhea, do you mind scrolling down a little bit further down the chart real quick? So this chart, again, it's a, it's a two-page, and it's front and back in your packet, it showed a couple of variety of uses that we have in here. Again, the, the uses, or the, the rightmost column is the one that we want to make sure we get right. So residential on top, commercial starts on this page, and then leads into the next one. Can you go to the next page real quick? We also threw in a couple, for industrial uses, it seems a little strange at first to consider it, but one of the things we wanted to potentially allow, and potentially through a conditional use permit, is the opportunity to have some degree of maker space, or light assembly or manufacturing. The classic instance of this is a conditional use permit you had a year and a half ago for Good Coffee, which is actually about to be opening up its retail presence in downtown. They're actually brewing the coffee on-site. It is technically an industrial process to do that, so if you want to have uses like that, you have to accommodate through that, maybe through a conditional use process.
I think you mean roasting, don't you?
Roasting, excuse me, not brewing, yeah, thank you. They are brewing it after they roast it, but the roastery element of it is, is that. But the same applies though for a brewery, or a brew pub, if you are brewing beer, that's an industrial process. There are byproducts, and it requires a lot of things from a building perspective, so.
And I'll just say on the coffee one, those roasters do tend to catch fire. And that's why they're kind of.
There's a combustibility factor, absolutely, yep. So that's why we would suggest that you allow for that type of latitude for, for certain limited industrial uses, which is why we suggest looking at the LI permitted use table elsewhere in the code, which, which would allow for that to be considered as a conditional use in, in that zoning district.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just one question. I just want to be sure I understand correctly, Chris, and this is just, just for clarification. We are talking about coffee roasting, considered industrial, and you say another business as well, where it was considered a brewery. Okay.
Yeah.
That's, so, so my question is, the, the definition for industrial is, by Webster, by definition is very clear. If you're manufacturing something, you're industrial. If you're not manufacturing something, you're not industrial.
Sure.
So are we now start to consider coffee roasting, beer brewery? If you, if you start to walk the line, I'm not suggesting this is a, this is broad, I'm just, I, then a baker, then they make bread, I mean, when you think about Ken's Pizza was denied by the planning commission in, in, in the, in the Eugene, because they were talking about, you know, self-taking all these bags of flour exploding, which, so, but bottom line is, are we defining now beer brewery, beer-making and, and coffee-making industrial uses, which means manufacturing something?
Yeah, the, the bakery example is really a tough one because you're, you're starting to hit that gray line. Because yes, flour is quite combustible. I think where, where we would take our cues from that is how, how would a fire department classify the occupancy of the building from a, from a fire life safety standpoint? And in the situation that we had with, with the coffee roastery here in town, because the bulk of the building was considered for fabricating purposes, for, for, for manufacturing purposes. Our determination in, in interpreting the code, even though they were going to have a cafe element to it, that was not the primary use of the building. It was for a roastery, so we went the conditional use route.
But that, that's what we do at interpretation we do. And I'm not in favor of, I guess, I'm saying the interpretation we make is making coffee now is manufacturing something. Sorry, roasting coffee is a manufacturer.
Roasting coffee, if that's the primary use of the building, yes. If it's something that's incidental, or if it's like, you know, if, if you were getting the beans wholesale basically, and then you're just finishing off the, the roasting process, that may not necessarily equate to manufacturing because it's just finishing the product, but that's not the primary purpose of the bill.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I just want to be sure I understood correctly. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, while we're on that page, you probably see the highlights of the entertainment facilities. Do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I want, want to get to that first.
Okay, well, we can do it now or do you want to, you have anything else?
No, go ahead.
Okay. This is one where we need a little direction from you all as far as how we can handle this. We, we attempted to create basically two tiered entertainment facility approach to it. And I think what, what the importance here is maybe impact or scale to the property itself, but also to the surrounding area. So I think in our minds, when you think of a minor entertainment facility, this would be something that could maybe fit into an existing storefront in downtown. Or maybe the conversion of a space, but it's a smaller format, smaller venue or facility that doesn't have a lot of residual impact or potential, potential impact, whether it be noise, operation, parking impact or, or visitor attraction. This is a more localized form of entertainment that we're looking at. A major entertainment facility is something that we would suspect attracts a crowd. Whether that be, no, no particular inference here because nothing's eminent, but like that could be a sports stadium, a amusement park, a casino, something of that magnitude where you are a, an attractor, where it's, it's less localized, it's more regionally or visitor focused and it has a significantly larger impact, positive or negative to the area and, and the land you surround it. So there, there are a couple of ways you could skin it. You could maybe do it by a venue capacity threshold. You could do it by a square footage or acreage requirement. You can go into the particular subuses of what entertainment may or may not be. But the concern is if you just leave a blanket entertainment facility thing, that could mean a one screen theater or it could mean a 12 screen movie theater. And they have various different impacts, obviously, depending on what that is on scale and appropriateness. It could also be something that maybe you don't want to see or that you would really want to make sure you vet. So that's why I think it's important to have that distinction right there, whether there are some things you are comfortable with in allowing in certain areas and some things that maybe you're not, or maybe you, you want to focus it only in this area. So with that, I'll open it up to any thoughts.
So this property was going to represent a significant amount of the additional housing stock?
It certainly.
We were going to have to.
It certainly can, yes.
And if we're going to put, you know, Wally World down there with a water park and all those things, how's that going to affect that piece?
Well, I mean, it, it, it builds that, that space up, but you know, the, the, the state still has an expectation that in the next 20 years, we still have to accommodate the housing that we're required to accommodate for. So by taking that property off our inventory for housing potentially, yeah, that, that probably affects other properties, not just in, in this general area, but across the city with an expectation of maybe higher density or density that you're not as comfortable with in other areas.
For example, an ice skating rink, would that be entertainment or would it be something else?
Great question. Is this an ice skating rink like you have in the Lloyd's Center where Tonya Harding might be skating and attracting your crowd? Or is this something you just put up seasonally for, for, for cheer or at Christmas time?
That's a good question. And the rink at the Lloyd's, the center is shrinking. They got one in Vancouver, one in Sherwood, and I think one in Beaver Town, but they're.
The Lloyd's Center is shrinking though, too.
Overall, yeah. But it's also like the difference between, let's say, and I'm not saying that this is preferred, but you know, some people have talked about the idea of recreational fields out there, a baseball complex or a soccer complex. That's one thing, but if you wanted to build a 5,000 seat minor league baseball facility, that's a completely different thing. That would be maybe a major facility versus a recreational facility. So I, I think in our estimation, a major facility is something that draws a crowd and that has a, not just a city impact, but a regional impact.
Entertainment is a pretty broad word.
It's a big word.
It is, and maybe you, you have to divvy it up a little bit more, but the concept of kind of a tiered allowance, I think that's, that's kind of what we were hoping could hold out to and how you fill in the details is probably what we're talking about tonight.
And the other thing, okay, we're creating a zone for a specific piece of property. And what can functionally go on that property is somewhat dictated by the access.
Sure.
And we don't know what the access is. So it makes it a little more difficult to effectively do that.
And frankly, that's why we listed it as conditional, or at least the major facility, because you might be able to, you know, if you had a mixed use environment on that property and let's say the ground floor, you wanted to do kind of a little arcade, a 2,000 square foot arcade or a gaming facility or whatever, not, not casino. That would be maybe okay because it can fit into the environment and it might be more localized. But if you're doing something like an amusement park, that's a whole nother.
Right.
A whole other, other ballgame.
And then the north end of that whole property is a pathway to the homeless.
It is presently. So do you want to go through any more of those uses?
I think Mrs. Craddock had her.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Prickett?
Or Ms. Critic. I'm sorry, I saw Shirley, sorry.
That's okay. You can say Ms. Shirley, that's the way the kids know you. My question is, is if, depending on how this is permitted and where, where the access is, it's going to, it's going to really flood if it comes out on 257th. That interchange is not going to be able to handle a lot of traffic. If you go today down there at five o'clock or 4:30, I can't even get out of my subdivision, let alone come up 257 going southbound. So we really have to be careful what we put in there because the, the 257, even though it's a ma- major transit line, is not going to be able to handle a whole lot.
And I think if we're relegated to the access that runs along the outside.
That would limit it too.
That's going to limit it by quite a bit.
Right.
The market sets anyway. Yeah.
So the venues can't be really, really big because the track, the, the, the system, the traffic system cannot handle it.
Right.
Unless you do it at midnight.
Right. But hypothetically too, if, if you're an investor and you're, you're intending to put a large scale entertainment facility and you're willing to spend nine figures, which is not outside the realm of the possibility to do it, improving an intersection, quote unquote, improving it to handle the, the potential traffic impacts, like be, be just part of doing business. The question, I guess, again, is certainly we have that situation and certainly in a review, us, Long Island County and other people who knew that, make those things a requirement for a condition of approval. But getting back to the property itself, is that land use truly appropriate for the property? But you, you raise good points, Ms. Prickett. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, part of the heavy traffic on 257 temporarily because 238 is shut down. But in between.
For the next six months.
Right. Right, but if, and you also, in the spring and summer, we're looking at construction on a lot of these roadways, which will impact that intersection. You're talking about Halsey Street, which they want to main, you know, do something with Halsey. And then you have I-84, which they just redid the overpasses and reconfigured that. But you're looking at major entities that have to sign off on something. And I don't, I don't see them, even if it's a $9 million complex, they're going to put a lot of money into a state highway. They may in the local, the county roads or the local roads, but not the state roads. And that's going to impact the freeway, I-84 especially.
Well, I mean, again, just because you listed as permitted use of conditional use doesn't mean that it is a provable use. If the impacts that this use generates are too much for the system to bear, either you have to improve the system, and that, that by the way goes not just for transportation. If, if, if a developer is unable or unwilling to make adjustments to handle that properly, not an approval deposit, just because you have permitted use of conditional use. It just says there's a potential there and certainly market conditions and existing infrastructure or ability to expand the infrastructure. Notwithstanding, they still have to accommodate for that. So that's why we require traffic impact analysis. That's why we have a nearing review utilities determining what is tolerable. And if it's not, what are the conditions that will make it? And I used to have more faith in traffic analysis. Well, in this case, I mean, if we're talking about a major facility so close to 84th, as Ms. Prickett indicated, it's not even just the county that would be involved, ODOT would be involved too.
Right.
Because almost assuredly access is going to come from the freeway as much as it would from the balance of trap deal or East County.
I think Mr. Wilcox, were you about to?
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I'm back. Mr. Prickett makes a really good point about access. I was thinking with a multiplex, you might have 300 cars, you know, trying to exit all at the same time to that one traffic light. I wanted to ask the commission, has anybody ever been on the Halsey when a, yeah, Ed Sheeran concert lets out? What, what does that look like? Are there sheriff's deputies directing traffic or how does that work?
I'll tell you what I know, which is not a lot. Basically, they hire the sheriffs to do traffic. Anytime they have an event there, such as a concert, and they're down, they're along Halsey all the way to 238th and then down to 257 to directing traffic. So it's pretty gridlock, you know, like, I guess I compare it to a lot of things. You know, meaning like if you go to a Blazer game, that's gridlock everywhere when you're leaving type of thing. If you go to Corbett on the Fourth of July. But this would be more often than that. Does that help?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. You could have that gridlock every day with like a multiplex, for example.
Right. And I just think people would be more okay with it if it was more irregular than regular, sure.
But again, through, through a conditional use process, which is what, what staff is suggesting here, these are the types of restrictions or limitations you could, you could put on a use. You know, a conditional use of, for it's the city, I need you folks to, to set conditions on the approval of an application. So if you were talking about, let's say, let's say, not that a concert venue would go there really wanted to happen, but just say hypothetically would be a concert venue. You could say concerts must end at 10 o'clock at night. You can only have X number of concerts per year at this facility. That's precisely the, the model that Ed Field works on with the city concurrently. There's a, effectively an agreement and an understanding. They can't have concerts five days a week throughout the summer. They're limited to X. They must be done by this time. They're responsible for their traffic control, all this stuff. So by, by making it a conditional use and taking that same concept and applying it to this property, you have similar levers that you can pull and you can adjust it for a case by case basis. And you don't have to predict now everything that you might have to, that might affect the property.
Right, so I guess would the step be to look at facility nature and decide which ones we want to allow?
I think it just, it's basically what more, I think for us to, to, to kind of move this forward, what's that threshold? Where does something go from minor to major? That's kind of the important thing for us to, we can, we can craft a definition accordingly. But what's, what's the standard we use? Is it acreage? Is it occupancy or capacity? What, what is our, our metric there for, for determining that?
There's many factors that go into that.
Yeah. I, I would say the biggest one would be capacity.
Capacity?
Anyone agree or disagree with that? I think the biggest single factor would probably be capacity.
And of course, one of the bigger factors is the ingress, ingress to that back property.
I was going to say, then you look at trips.
One of the things we could look at as far as setting a number for capacity is look to the building code because the building code establishes occupancy ratings based on capacity. So we could maybe look to the building code to give us where that threshold is from a number standpoint to do that, so we don't have to create an artificial number out of thin air. But maybe we can look to the building code to provide us that, that, that line that crosses into a major. Or as you were saying, trip generation to a degree, that could be another standard you look at as well too. Because the IT, the, the Institute of Traffic Engineers has a manual based on a variety of land use types and says, okay, for this, you're generating X number of trips per day or whatever it might be. And you can use that threshold as well too.
Okay.
And has anybody been in contact with the factory outlets regarding adhesion through there? And are there some discussion of providing?
At the moment, there is not a presumption that that will happen. We, we did have recent conversations with them and I think we have to plan for the access we have, but allow for the possibility that we could maybe get it one day. But I think as of now, we should just plan for what's on the ground now. And that is.
What would a tent, what would enhance their operation?
Right, exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, knowing that, that, that does affect things a little bit.
Well, certainly. And then, you know, the market reality will, will affect it too. If, if, you know, you have a major entertainment facility, but they want for sure a prime access point, they might not get it so easily. So they may not, this may not be the property for them and that might be okay.
this may not be the property for them. And that might be okay. But, you know, the facts are, are on the ground that we have it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? Can we roll along? Okay.
Can you scroll a little bit further down already? Again, on the TCAB review and the height restrictions, those were two things. The TCAB, the Town Center Advisory Board presuming that becomes an entity. And again, we're looking at the rightmost column tonight. What we're saying here is that within a land use review, whether it be a staff level decision or whether it be a decision that you folks make, but within the review, not an additional review, but baked into the current review processes we have outlined. The TCAB, the Town Center Advisory Board would have the ability to provide comment or testimony on projects to determine whether or not it is in the spirit of the Town Center Plan. And as a commenter, then just like a citizen who, who testifies or just like the fire department or the public works department, they would carry an appeal right. If they disagreed with a decision that either staff made or that the planning commission makes. So it doesn't introduce or lengthen a overall timeline for, for developer review. But what it does do is it makes the developer pay attention to the Town Center Plan and to make sure that they are doing something that is compatible with that, with that vision and with the vision in particular of, of the Confluence property.
If I, if I look particularly at MU two, okay. Those aren't all reviewed by TCAB. And that's a significant amount of Town Center properties.
It is, but I, I guess, again, I would, I would ask that we, we look particularly tonight at, at the rightmost column, the the, the MU three, the, the Confluence property, because that's the one that we have to make sure we get right. If you want to expand it to MU two, we can. But I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on what, what TCAB's review would be on, on that.
Okay, so I said another question. So if I go back on the commercial uses. Right, and I look at restaurants and bars is permitted, restaurants with drive-throughs permitted with specific standards. Kiosks with the drive-throughs not.
Can you scroll back up already? I'm sorry.
And mobile food vendor.
Uh, to the next page, sir.
In a right-of-way is permitted, but, but not on a private lot. So you wouldn't have like a pod. Well, a pod would be commercial or conditional, I should say. I'm trying to get the drive-through, no drive-through thing. Trying to understand that. Because we were kind of looking at, I know, to try to make that more walkable if possible.
Right. So again, looking at, at the rightmost column, under restaurants and bars without a drive-through are, would be permitted with a drive-through, potentially permitted with specific standards. And I think the specific standards there would come as far as the idea of positioning it and whether or not it could be okay. I think one of the things that we're trying to be mindful of is not completely excluding market creativity or market demand. I mean, if anything, from the COVID perspective, drive-through, the ability to pick up your food through a drive-through only got more popular.
Absolutely.
And, and like with a restaurant, say like Sugar Pine, they have a drive-through. It's just not like a typical Wendy's or McDonald's or Burger Bill drive-through. It's not a preferred outcome. And I think maybe the specific standards you could put there are, you're not going to put this along the riverfront park. Maybe you only allow it like on the westernmost portions of, of, of the property where it's closer to the outlets and it has less of a visual impact. Or maybe you allow for only so much queuing. I mean, there's, there's things.
That would be more conditional, would it not?
It could be. And if that's a more appropriate descriptor, we can call it conditional. You'd be fine with that.
Yeah. Conditional?
Yeah.
Anyone disagree with that? Okay, and then mobile food vendor in a park or right-of-way. Would we allow those? Says that we would.
This speaks to how you define mobile food vendor. And right now, that means everything from a hot dog or lemonade stand all the way through a food cart. So if you want to have the allowances for a hot dog stand, for instance, to be on the side of a sidewalk where there's minimal impact or, you know, in the park. And you really don't think there's any problem with it, that's, that's fine. Where we probably don't want to see it, from at least what I've understood, are the community's expectation before is we don't want to have it just on an isolated property where over time it just happens to be there. Yeah, that is, it's really seen as a temporary measure. Now, a mobile, a, a food cart pod, for instance, how it would be a little bit different because there's an expectation of utility connection, system development charge payment, potentially, depending on programs or whatever, but at least there's a little bit more permanence to that temporary nature of that property. So I think that's, that's kind of the idea is if you want to have those types of uses there, they can be intentional about where they should go.
So again, would that be conditional?
It could be, but at the same rate, right now, you don't require land use applications for mobile food carts. Right now, you have standards in place for how they should operate and how they have to site, but you don't, we don't require a land use approval for it. So
Sure.
That's why we didn't list it as conditional.
There is, there is approval for a site development review for the kiosk, but that's why, that, that was, if you guys remember, we also had talked about that as some of the items in our code that needs to be re-looked at. But, uh, but as a use itself, no, we don't have a section. Yeah.
Kiosk, just as a reminder, is like the coffee drive-through that you have down at, like, say Troutdale Market Center or the one that's in Woodville. That's a kiosk. So in that case, somebody's putting in asphalt, infrastructure, utility piping, and it's almost pseudo-permanent. And that, that's probably not your highest and best use standard. So that's why we're suggesting we don't allow it there.
Okay.
And right-of-way, does any street?
Sure, if it's public or private meaning.
A right-of-way would imply you could set up on a public street. Would that be permanently or temporary or?
Well, I think right now the standards you have in place suggests it has to be temporary where there's hours of operations tied to it. I don't think there's a permanence there. And they would have to also, in addition to getting our, they would have to get probably right-of-way permit from our public works department. And they have the right to set parameters as far as how long you can be there. Much as if you're like digging in the right-of-way.
Yeah, there, in fact, when there is a special occasion, you shut down that street.
Sure.
And everybody, so.
Absolutely.
Grouping of what have you, yes. But, yeah, it should be conditional also.
Okay.
Chris, you had a question on the drive-through financial institutions or banks? Are, are you including a, a drive, drive-by ATM in that?
Yeah, so on that, on the top of the second page there, where it says financial institutions with drive-through, that would be assumed either a branch location with a drive-through or an ATM drive-through. Either, either. An ATM is a financial.
Yeah, a lot of them have walkouts or walk-up.
Okay, so I was thinking, some of the ones I've been to, the drive, drive-through lanes can take up quite a bit of real estate in the, out of the parking lot.
They can. And that's one of the reasons why we, we suggest that be conditional for, for the Confluence property.
Okay. Would you mind if we took a five-minute recess? That'd be okay? Okay.
Do we have to come back?
Yes, yeah, come back. Back at eight twenty-five. If everyone's okay with that, thank you.
Yeah.
We are back in session. Thank you. And we left off.
And Arini, if you're back, if you have, if you're not back, that's okay. I'll, I'll do it. If you are, you can switch it to your screen share where we were at.
Now, I know these stuff that came through the three cities had a lot to do with parking. Are there any changes to our current parking standard?
At the moment, we're, we're looking just at, at the rightmost column, the mixed-use column. Parking, as a reminder, is in an entirely different chapter of the code. And there are already ratios that are built into, into parking standards for a variety of these uses. So they would probably remain the same.
Okay.
There are. I think one thing, just as a general reminder for everyone, it's, it's, we're kind of in a unique situation here because we're, we're trying to establish a new zoning district. And we're establishing a property that is legally owned by the Urban Renewal Agency, but technically still controlled by the city of Troutdale and its effective political leadership. And as we start thinking about potential development opportunity for that site, the city has, in this case, double protection. It has the protection of the development code to try to steer a preferred outcome of development. But it also has the seller's rights to determine whether or not it wishes to sell to a developer who has a concept that meshes with the, the spirit and intent of the property. So we're, we're kind of in a unique exercise. We're, we're trying to match zoning with an expectation and a desired outcome for the property. But let's, let's also keep in mind that we have other protections in place too, that even if we don't get our zoning standards a hundred percent down in this first effort to create the zoning district, there's two things we can always do. We can continue and further amend the code at a later point. And as a seller, we have the right to entertain or not entertain any particular offer or to negotiate with development to get an outcome that is favorable. And if the development requires amendments to the code or variances to the code, they would have to follow through on, on those, those things too. So I just wanted to remind folks of that too, if we're worried about trying to get too much right tonight.
No, I know. I, I love my council, but just, you know, you want to have their back as much as you can.
Sure.
So I guess at this time, I see we got a couple of counselors. And so if we don't mind, let's go ahead and take some comment from them.
Before we do, Mr. Chair, let me just pull up the packet so we have it in front of us. So in case they wanted to reference it too.
Okay.
Give me one moment while we pull that up. Unless, Amber, do you happen to have it up by chance?
Just here from the peanut gallery here.
I don't have it pulled up, but I did see, oh, did, did we lose Arini?
I think we did, so.
Oh, shoot.
So we'll be right, give us just a minute to pull up the packet. It's okay. I've, I've got it up now, Amber. Thank you.
Hey, the council went till after ten last night.
Well, you're halfway there.
How's problem?
All right, we're ready to screen share when, if and when needed, so.
Okay. Let's start with you. I'm sure you have something to say.
As in me? I just have, I've been looking through all this and obviously watching along. And I know that there was some visuals done for the height down at the URA. And I was pleasantly surprised how nice that actually looked. I think the geography works there, well there. But I have a lot of concerns about height in the downtown area and being consistent with two things. The small-town feel that we've heard that everybody wants. And when I first became a planning commissioner, they send you to, you know, this class for two days. And the one thing I remember most was being told how keeping people friendly amongst each other all came down to parking. When people didn't fight over parking, they didn't have other issues. And so part of my concern with height isn't so much the small-town feel as it is, where to put cars that at least in the next ten to fifteen years would come with some of that height. Personally, I wouldn't mind if there was, you know, several high-rise type buildings down in the URA. Because I think the geography supports it and there's lots of views. You can do a lot of things there. And get a fair amount of nice upper-end either hotels or residents. I mean, a lot of different ways to go there, but the height doesn't concern me there. It does concern me in the downtown area. And then, and looking through some of this. And having gone through this before, I'm a little concerned when we do a lot of conditional uses that at least in the past, conditional has meant we ended up getting things we didn't want because we didn't have a way to not have them. So I'm torn between leaving it open to where here's all these, you know, tell us what you have for a vision and let's look at it. And we don't really like that, but we don't really have a legal recourse to stop it. So I'm not sure how to balance that, but that's what I keep watching for. Thanks.
Just for clarification, you're, you're saying we, a conditional use, we ended up getting something we didn't want and we approved a conditional?
Yeah, I mean, we've been through unconditional uses where it's like, you know, here's the stuff and it meets all the standards, but it's not something that people necessarily liked. It was, yeah, I checked the boxes, but it's, I don't know that anybody really felt good about saying yes. And I worry about those kinds of setups. So I say, it's kind of a double-edged sword where it's really nice to be able to have that leeway to put a bakery in, you know, at the bottom. I think of a lot of the places like in downtown Seattle where my daughter lived and they had bakeries and coffee shops and things that might be considered either light manufacturing or light industrial, I guess. But really made for a nice community feel. On the same hand, I mean, I, I don't know. It, I just, I get nervous. No. Pros and cons there. So I don't know how to protect and still stay open.
Well, it's, it's really kind of tough. And, you know, part of it in planning is if it fits in the box, it's in the box and it goes or it doesn't go.
Well, I mean, you also get into what is it fair and not concise, but fair and measurable standards. And I also don't want to get us into a legal position where, you know, because somebody had a few nice ammen, or, you know, spiffs or something that we weren't fair and concise, so. I worry.
Okay. All right, counselors. Thank you, Councilor Clans.
Thanks. You guys do great work.
I'm just gonna call, give him a call. Hello?
Good night.
Okay.
Counselor Kaz.
Um, so when I was, so Glenn and Dave and, and I went it was very nice of the folks at, with Bremic to give us a tour of Slab Town and we were just super impressed. And anyway, just that, we got to talking with Brent Perry, co-owner of Bremic about, about a master plan in the process of, and, and I'm not telling you guys anything you don't already know, but what I was so impressed with was just learning the process about identifying, you know, what, what exactly in the master plan, like, do we want being strategic about how to maximize the sale value of the property, how to strategically build up? sale value of the property, how to strategically build up all of these things? And so it was really inspiring and educational for me and got me thinking kind of from a developer's perspective, too. And so I think, I think I'm all for flexibility and openness with, with the codes at this point going into it. I, I see a huge value in, in building up. They, they said to 75 feet before you start getting into like high-rise complications. Those are their words. And like I say, I'm not telling you guys anything you probably don't already know. My perspective is I think that we should be open and give ourselves lots of leeway and flexibility for what the market's going to. How, how do we maximize the value of this land, basically? And so, and by the way, I'm personally all for building up as high as we, we building up all in the downtown area is not a problem to me. I'm, I actually like that. I think that it would give statement buildings to the downtown. So personally, I really, I, I actually, I don't see an impediment to that. I think it would just be really cool. But also with like keeping in mind the facades of the buildings, like we want, we do want, you know, some congruence with, with how they look and with the historic feel. But, you know, I, I, I don't think that a small-town feel necessarily means small buildings. I think we can have a, I think that, I think having statement buildings is legitimizing. So anyway, I think coming at it with lots, like I say, gonna repeat myself, but flexibility and openness to developers visions and what they need will help us make the most, frankly, money off of, you know, the, the land itself and being strategic about how we identify that and lay it all out in a plan.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kaz. Okay, Counselor White.
Hi, Chair Stafferson. I, I got back from break a little late and I also missed the beginning of your meeting, so I'm not sure what, where you guys are at in your meeting. Or what, what, what kind of feedback were you looking for?
Worried about the 8:35 mark. And what we're looking for is comments and commentary on primarily the MU3 zone, which would be the zoning for the Confluence site.
Okay. You know, I, I was on that tour and I thank Allison for arranging it. It was very educational. And but I couldn't help noticing that our, one, our spot is, is better than anything I saw down there. And they have a lot more room to build this kind of project. And, and it just left me with the takeaway of that whatever we do down there has to be very unique, very special. You know, it's, it's down to 16 acres is all we have. So, you know, the idea of restaurants with drive-throughs doesn't really appeal. Stuff you can build anywhere. I don't really want to see, see it go in there. I want it to be very, you know, the thing that puts Troutdale on the map, so to speak. So I am leaning towards that. And Paul Wilcox sent us an email that got me thinking as well. If the drawing we saw showed the profiles of the 75-foot building, but they were only to the north. So I don't know if we're gonna do that height limit just for that lot or towards the north. And then the, because I liked how the drawing looked and it was very careful not to block Prouden's Bluff. So I don't know what you guys have decided on that, or maybe Chris could elaborate, or even Paul, since he was the one that sent the email. But I try not to interfere with you guys with your meeting and I really look to you guys as the experts. You guys, this is your wheelhouse. And I know you're down sandy, but I have a lot of faith and confidence in this group and I, I'm always proud of the work you guys do. That's all I have.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So Counselor White, just since I'm gonna go ahead and show kind of the images you and I think Counselor Glance had suggested just their planning commission season two. Give me one moment to pull it up here. Too many open windows, sorry. Are you all seeing a slide saying Google Street View image on your computers?
Yep.
All right. So here, again, this is the view, which I think Counselor Glance was the one who had requested kind of this general observation. So you can see where the water tower is in reference, highlighted there in the yellow. So we're gonna transition this view into kind of a 3D model. So you can kind of see the placeholder there. So this is kind of the existing view without any suspected or prospective development. Now what we're gonna do is we're gonna add a hypothetical layout. This is actually the, the concept that was shown in the town center plan. Item A shows a 75-foot tall building like we hotel in that location. Item B shows kind of a rooftop roughly 45 to 65 feet in height. So as the counselors mentioned, I mean, there is impact, yes, but it's minimized and certainly the view of the bluff, the view of the tower is not there. But to Commissioner Wilcox's point, yes, there is a potential that if, if placed somewhat elsewhere, there could be maybe different viewpoints. So that might be something. And that's, I think, one of the reasons why we are suggesting that if you're going above 55 feet, let Planning Commission be the one to make the call. Because then you can look at the facts of the matter and determine, is this an appropriate scale for that particular placement on the property? And in some areas, you're probably gonna have less of an impact than you would in others. This is another modification of the concept that just shows the hotel placement closer to the freeway. It replaces the hotel location in the previous slide with something that's 55 feet for reference. So hopefully, we've done our homework on that and hopefully, you know, the, the idea of kind of that two-tiered height system that we have in this plan, in this draft for you gives further justification why we think it's important that we're comfortable with 55 feet as a community. We can demonstrate that it's not really visually impactful negatively. But if we do go higher, there could be impacts and that's something that this body is equipped to handle, to review.
Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you going through that. And you know, I, I thought I would also mention that in, in thinking about if we do this at that site, possibly doing something complimentary on the Peninsula Tract. Because I see that as the only way to ever improve on the RV park that's there. I think there has to be something better than an RV park and more profitable, but definitely complimentary to the urban renewal site. Just something to put in the back burner and think about. I know you got to focus tonight on, on what you're doing, but it's something I'd like to see. And the council goal was to have high-quality development on the Sandy, on the Sandy River.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I've said this before, but I've just gotta say it one last time. I would just zone in when somebody comes in.
You could do that. One of the reasons I think why we're suggesting you do it in advance is, well, twofold. One is I think we're better able to market the property because our existing zoning frankly does not speak potentially to the highest and best use that that property could command, could, could, could command in the open market. If people who are doing just the due diligence on it see general commercial zoning on it, they see a 35 or in some cases a 45-foot height allowance. That doesn't have the same potential impact that something that allows 55 to 75 feet. And then from an appraisal standpoint, by being very deliberate about what potential uses you can have, as well as allowing for a higher land use, you're likely to get a higher appraised value and that, that matters for the cities or ultimately the, the urban renewal agency and ultimately the city's bottom line. We think that there's a high likelihood you could get a better sales on the property with a new zoning district in place, even if you don't have all the details ironed out at this point.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a real quick question?
Yes, you may.
Um, so I'm wondering, would it, would it be appropriate to bring in somebody like Bremic to just kind of consult through this process, just to ask them, you know, what's, what's attractive to a developer, builder? Because in the only, the reason why I ask is because they offered and are happy to do it. And so I just kind of wanted to relay their message along, too. But in talking to them, I learned a ton and just kind of thought it might be nice to, to pick their brains.
They are very welcome to come in. These meetings are all public. They're, they're noticed. We have invited Bremic to meetings before and some meetings they've come to and some meetings they have elected not to come to.
One thing, though, to dovetail on that. One of the, the things how we arrived at this point is we've been in touch with consultants. Cascadia Partners was one of them, where the council got the presentation. And even though there were things in that presentation I know certain counselors did not like or care for, one of the things that they did to get to that point of the presentation was to interview master developers like Bremic and like some of the folks you saw in, in, in the Slab Town development. In fact, the, one of the guys, I think, of the buildings you toured was one of the persons interviewed. So part of what we're trying to do here is take some of that commentary that we heard through, through that listening process even six months ago to do it. But I mean, certainly if, if that's the desire of council to have kind of a continued consultant there, I mean, that's within your, your wheelhouse to request that. And that would be just a conversation. We would start with Ray on that, whether it's Bremic or whoever it would be.
Yeah. We've typically had a lot of success of developers coming in and commenting when we have been working on the code. And that's been very helpful.
How do you guys feel about it? Do you think that it would be helpful moving forward to, you know, be like further in touch with, with somebody like that and, and have somebody involved or we're, just how, how do you feel moving forward yourselves?
I, I guess I'll start. I probably wouldn't be a big proponent of someone being a consultant. I'm much more of the organic method, which would be having an open meeting and having these people come and then comment like a work session, basically. We worked on the development code.
I think I'd like to add, too, though, if, you know, with a rezone and they're acting as a consultant and they will work on the site and they might be interested on the site, that could kind, that, that might create kind of a muddling of conflict of interest. And we want to stay clear as that is possible, too, in terms of rezoning. And if it's a public comment situation, I think that would be appropriate. But if Bremic is the sole consultant in a rezoning consideration, that could be a gray area that I would just like to know could possibly be happening.
I guess if there's any thought that they could be a player, I, I think you've just got to go the public route.
Yeah, that makes sense. Good point.
Otherwise, I think that'd come back on you or us.
I would say, though, that I know that they have offered some commentary that has gone not just into this effort, but even into the larger town center effort and how we think about that. And it's not even just Bremic, it's other local developers, too. Mike McHale, who's a local developer, has, has, I think, contributed thoughts that have gotten us to this point, a few other folks, too. So it's, it's, it's community-built and it's not, we're, we're not just trying to spitball. I think we're, we're trying to respond to what we've heard from the development community because ultimately that's who we have to solicit this, this property to. Right. It's got to work for them, of course. The hotel, I would say in particular, hearing from the lodging industry, the hotel community really drove home the point that you need to be looking at, at up to 75 feet. Because the type and caliber and quality of hotel you're probably trying to attract for this property is gonna require a height of that magnitude almost certainly. So that was really important for us to hear and we got that out of, out of that effort with Cascadia.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Okay. So I guess I could kind of run through some of these. Just give you my thoughts. Okay, so if we go down, probably my biggest hang-up would be entertainment major.
One second. Let me just catch up with you.
That'd probably be my hill to die on.
Irene, do you have your screen up with the, the chart? Are you able to screen share?
Just give me a second. I had to restart my computer because I had issues, but on the open.
Thank you.
Is that big enough?
You can make a page width. That way we're looking at the rightmost column, too.
Okay. So I guess just to get some thoughts out there so we can kind of move this along. Ready?
Yeah, we just need, if you can do like a page width view, because then we can see the use and the rightmost column.
Yeah, it's, it's saying that it's paused right now. I'm sorry. I apologize for this. Saying that the screen share is paused. Let me just cancel. And then start over again.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Chair. We'll get the technology going.
And, and my opinion, I would pull facility major, entertainment facility major. I just think that the ramifications put out the benefits there pretty easily as far as not allowing it. Minor, I think is probably okay.
How would you define minor? By occupancy, attendees?
Yeah, what are you thinking for minor? I'm thinking like 5K or less.
As far as occupancy?
No, footage.
Of square footage?
Yeah.
I think honestly, indoor capacity or outdoor capacity is determined by a building code or by a fire marshal is probably a clear way to do it because that's a objectionable standard, a clear objective standard rather than something that you create random threshold for. Case in point, let's say you have a indoor tennis court or indoor pickleball court. That might take up 20,000 square feet, but your actual capacity for the, the activity might be 50 people. So I think if you look at it, maybe the type of thing that is in occupancy. So I think if you look at maybe, again, the type of thing that is in occupancy grading, you would expect the capacity. The other option you can look at is trip generation. So maybe you could have two thresholds and basically say whatever is the more restrictive standard would be the...
Occupancy or trips?
Yeah.
That would mean minor would move to a specific standard.
Well, you would just define it in the definition. Say, what is an entertainment facility minor? It is a facility that lists out a couple of uses and then it says that has a capacity of X number of people or generates Y number of trips. And then if you listen to that, okay, that's much, so it has to go through the planning's application. But then you don't have to worry about the specificity. And you know that that's the intent of the code, that it's something localized and it's not going to be potentially disruptive to the greater area. I think, again, that's the critical thing about a major entertainment facility is generating traffic, you're generating attraction, and it could be detrimental to the surrounding area as well.
Right.
Chris? As an example, what would the high school auditorium that the liberal arts building has a theater inside it? Now, that has a capacity. Is that, would that be considered, I mean, not including the classrooms, because I'm just, the entertainment part of it has an orchestra pit and seating. Would that be considered minor or would that be considered major? I mean...
I don't have the capacity of that.
Yeah, I don't know the capacity, but I know I've been in it. But the parking wasn't, if you put a play there, the parking wasn't bad. So, but then I'm not, I mean, it isn't open all the time either. It's only open when there's a play or a major music event. So I think capacity plus square footage, maybe? I don't know.
Or trip generation.
Yeah, or trip, or all three.
So I think we don't...
I don't think that's a good comparison, the school is essentially, where this is public, it's open to the public at any time.
If you were to do a, if you were to do like, let's say, a convertible theater space in downtown, let's just use a hypothetical. And this is a space that can seat up to, let's say, a hundred people. And it could be a one-screen movie theater, it could have a stage where you could have little black box theater performances, it could have a comedian, it could have a small recording booth. It's not at the same level of an edge field concert venue where you're attracting thousands of people.
Right.
My mind, I think, when I think about it, that's a minor entertainment venue. There's a limited impact, there's a limited size, and it's appropriately scaled for a small town.
Right.
A major facility is something like a twelve flex cinema, like we have twelve screens. You're tracking people from a wide range of places, something that would not necessarily be appropriate for downtown traffic. Maybe it's appropriate for a general commercial area, and I guess the question then becomes, is it appropriate for the population? And it doesn't have to be just a movie theater, it could be, you know, anything that's that magnitude where you're generating those trips. And maybe trip generation plus capacity is the magic formula. We can try to craft that accordingly, and maybe we add some square footage requirement to it as well.
We probably would need to, and then we'll also need to look at the definition of it.
Well, and at some point, remember, you do provide, Director Lee, I guess, some latitude to make that determination. But anyway, I can make an interpretation.
We just want to help you.
Yeah, that's fine, I appreciate it, but we don't have to stick the lens. I can make an interpretation, somebody can disagree with it and can appeal to you folks to say, you think the purchase in this definition, we're a minor facility, we're a different relation facility.
So I say major out.
I agree.
I agree.
Any disagree? A limb make unit industrial. Help me, help me get my head right now.
I may actually pick on Counselor Caswell because she may have some clarification there. I guess what we're thinking about here is a situation where you could have a residential unit, maybe an apartment, ADU, whatever you want to call it, caretaker unit, that is part of a space where, to use Mr. Mamon's term, like light manufacturing can occur. So if you were a distiller wanting to make spirits and part of your deal was to allow for a distiller in training to reside on the property, and that's part of a compensation package for him, you have the ability to co-locate a residential and an industrial use in one space, provided you meet building code standards. Right now, you don't allow for it. Question is, could you allow for it? And we're starting to see trends in the industry that suggest this is a very compelling idea to have. And I don't know if anybody has any opinion on that.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that maker spaces, small ones for entrepreneurs would be really cool.
Artists.
For artists.
So would that be something to just, to do on a conditional basis?
What do you mean conditional? I'm trying to understand.
Do it on a case-by-case.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's your folks' call. I mean, keep in mind, with every conditional use you have, you, planning commissioners may add to your docket of responsibility.
Well, the only one I think about is, okay, like residential commercial. I just think probably when it gets into industrial, we need to look at it.
Are you concerned about it from a building safety perspective? Because that's something that we would review through a building code, review our building...
Probably more noise nuisance, quality of life.
Chemicals involved, there's a whole mirror of things.
What's that?
Chemicals.
Yeah.
And what they're doing. It's a, it's really a Pandora's box.
So do you do conditional?
I think it should be limited to industrial.
Limited to, I'm sorry, just do it in industrial property?
If they're manufacturing anything, that should be industrial.
Okay. So you're saying that would only be allowed in industrial property? Okay.
So to not allow for a residential industrial mix, if I'm understanding you correctly?
That's what Commissioner Whitey is saying. Any feedback, guys, on that?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, I don't know, people like jewelers who are making something in a small space.
Yeah, would that be industrial? Probably would, be manufacturing.
You could argue it would be.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So do we want to allow for that or to only do that in industrial property? Don't all speak at once. Okay, Counselor Allen, Commissioner Allen, I should say. Hang on, Rich, you're not coming through for some reason. He's not muted, but we're not getting him either. There you go, Rich, try it now. Commissioner Allen?
Okay, I just changed it, can you hear that? Can you hear, can you hear the microphone?
Yes.
Okay. What I was saying is I like the idea of artisan, small, not high-production type establishments. I'm just not sure how you would put that in so that you get what you're really looking for and not what you're not. So perhaps conditional would work, but I'm going to have to defer to the people that have been on the commission for longer than I have, to see if there's a way of doing that.
Anyone else?
I like the fact that they want to include live and work at the same time. But again, I think it should not, it should be conditional use because we're not, I mean, safety and, like you said, noise, chemicals, should be a case-by-case. I mean, I agree that artisans should be allowed to do this in a small setting. But again, we have to be real careful what kind of things are allowed and what aren't allowed. And under a conditional use, we have a little more control over that.
So would we leave residential commercial as permitted, residential industrial?
Mr. Chair, just one consideration, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
You know, conditional use is a tool that, in, I suppose, should be used sparingly. While there is obviously the ability to be discretionary, but those conditions can be imposed through the code itself. If we put everything conditional, as interesting might be, maybe I run the risk to overwhelm the commission and maybe the council as well, for appeal. So I think the tools at our disposal are enough for a sophisticated analysis where we can impose specific conditions, specific requirements, that even one might be at first sight, potentially established as a condition, you might not need the risk to do it. Because really, at a certain point, we might be overwhelmed, also because this is a new entity with a lot of interest, with a lot of development, with people trying to push the envelope, with people trying to work on a side of the definition, with people working on pushing the envelope. We might really run the risk to be overwhelmed, to not be able to discharge our task the way to do it. And I think that there's that to be, there is indeed a better way to do it, a much more simpler. One is obviously not to be able to list every possible use because we're not going to be able to win the battle that way. If you start to establish right now a vision for a future downtown area, establishing if the bakery with its outside seating or the brewery with its, you know, the jeweler or not, we really run the risk to create a code that is unsustainable on a level of organization and on a level of jurisdiction. So...
So like on some...
Conditioning everything, I'm sorry, my apologies. It's just, if you want to go for all conditional user for everything, you know, it's what it's going to be. But I think there is the ability to create implicit in the code, some condition where we don't have to go case-by-case every time. Maybe by a level of pollution, maybe by a level of sound, maybe by a level of operation. So that there is some sort of immediate response. Also because when you think about it, again, I understand we are trying to protect the city, but there are different mechanisms. If everything's a conditional, you might create potential disincentive from developing investment to come there. My experience talking to site selectors is that in some ways, if you start to impose too much leeway time, then you might potentially run the risk to lose these opportunities. Also because, as we discussed last time, when you talk to site selectors, when you talk to CEO of an organization, there are other conditions that are even more relevant. The quality of the urban fabric, the quality of the school district, the quality of amenity, the logistics. These people are bringing family, these people are bringing professional, these people are bringing kids, so... Try to be too, too, too specific, I'm afraid, and that might work against us in the long run.
So you're thinking, rather than conditional, like with the industrial, we're either better to go in or out? Right?
I would say, and my apologies, it might not help, but maybe it's not the answer we're looking for. I think there is a place for specific conditional users, special user review, we're calling Gresham. But on the other hand, I think there are also the ability, intrinsic in the code, to establish those critical uses through condition that can be already implicit in the code. And so avoid the process, and I'm talking about the quasi-judicial process of going in front of the design commission, apply for a committee, meeting, and so on and so forth. We might really run the risk to be overwhelmed.
Right.
But...
I think we're going to have to, anyone else on that one? You guys are coming from all over the place here. So do we mark vote on it?
Well, I mean, again, this is going to come before you in a hearing at some point. So you guys can make that decision that night to know which way the trade winds blow, help staff prepare draft for you all for the hearing. And then you folks can make that decision at the hearing.
Okay.
So I guess what we're asking for is where do you want us drafted as it is? And then...
Do you guys want to draft it as is and then take it up at the hearing? All right?
Yep, that might be a good idea because we may, some of the community may have a better idea on how we should do this too.
Correct.
But I would think eliminate the major...
We will list it as a no or not.
Got that one, the conditional. What you, I'm sorry, Counselor Allen? Commissioner Allen?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was just wondering, did we ever get any feedback from the outlet mall area as to what their preferences were and if they wanted to be more like the confluence or not?
Anything else? Anything else you want to change? Now's your time, guys. Okay. So this would be the new M3 zone. And all of, any development proposal would be first vetted by TCAT and then most likely come to planning and then on the city council. Right, be my guest. Okay, so the good news is this is a type four. And so it can be discussed outside. Engage people, talk to them. And see what they think about it. More input, the better.
We are prepared as a staff to bring this to you all for a hearing on June 9th. We'll go for launch. By bringing it to you on June 9th, that would mean the council would see it on June 22nd or July 13th. Which kind of meets a goal that we would have, that if we are able to rezone the property, that allows us the summer to begin market solicitation for development interests.
Yeah, can we do it in one meeting?
Can we do, I'm sorry.
Type four.
Right, for you folks, a June 9th hearing, and then council will hear on June 22nd and then July 13th. Arrive on a recommendation within one hearing?
Probably.
That's your question.
Okay, so if the council has a meeting in the latter part of June, in the middle of July.
That's what they're scheduled, and July's, the July meeting is their one meeting scheduled for July, so they have to meet.
All right. Commissioner Glanz.
I have a crazy idea, and I'm gonna mention this now, so you guys can ponder it. What if some of this concern over industrial and types of businesses was completely outside of the URA and pushed more into the outlet mall? I think it would be nice if the outlet mall had nicer types of shops that promoted more, you know, walking through. It'd be awesome to have like somebody who, you know, created jewelry in there and different types of higher-end shops, I guess, that could be supported by a higher-end residentially focused community on the actual URA with hotels and things like that. Why not push some of that more business type of stuff towards the outlet mall? Just a thought.
No, it's a good thought, and you know, the outlet mall, their zoning is potentially gonna change too.
Now that this.
Oh no, the next bite at the apple. And that's going to affect a lot of properties.
And I think what'll happen in that conference, how it's developed, will pull back on the outlet mall for improvements.
You're right, there are some neat things that could be done there. There's some neat things there now that it could, you know. All right. Anything else before the draft comes out? Is good? Okay.
Wonderful, thank you. And are we ready to move to the next?
Yeah.
Section?
Yeah.
And in the interest of time and also my battery life, I'm gonna actually drop off my laptop. You will still hear me, you just won't see me, because my computer is dying, and apparently I forgot my power cord, so give me one moment while I do that.
What do you have?
Something that's not working with the computer, I tried that once before.
Okay.
Give me one moment while I disengage, you should all still be able to hear me, and really, you're still able to share a screen. That would be helpful, thank you. Our next discussion tonight is looking at the sign standards, and I don't hope to spend too much time on it tonight, since we're already at 9:20 this evening, but to bring it up again. Again, this was a topic that planning commission began looking at last summer, and because of other things that had come up, and frankly, a lot of potential work had needed to go into it, we wanted to bring it back to your attention or back on your radar. So not necessarily expecting a robust discussion tonight, but a reminder that you guys had started to work on some potential code amendments to this chapter of the development code. Staff is still seeking to have this section updated. There are some things in the sign standards that are difficult, and particularly with our new software system, the ability for us to handle sign permits is a little quirky. So one of the main things we would want to see is to decouple to still require sign permits, but to decouple them from the land use review process, because that makes our ability to turn an application much faster. We don't have to generate as much paperwork and paper trail. So we still maintain standards, but we just do not require a land use application. It still requires planning approval, but not a land use application. That's pretty much the big push on it. There was some other language as far as clarifying what signs are, some language definition changes that you see in these standards. A little bit more flexibility on real estate signage, clarification about signs that we wish to ban, particularly those that flutter or that rotate, things of that nature. So those were just, again, a reminder and recap of the things we were working on.
I wanna check, can we call out real estate signs? I believe that we could not, and that's why we did not. Because that was identifying content. The point that the sign had to be read.
We will, I think we can get a clear legal interpretation of it, because this relates to the so-called Gilbert case. This was a Supreme Court case where the Supreme Court, in short, said you cannot regulate, a government can regulate sign standards, but it cannot regulate sign content. The question becomes then is, is a real estate sign, because we're specifically calling it out as a real estate sign, is that content? Or is that a classification of the sign?
I was gonna say, is there another term for that type of sign?
Property sale sign? I mean, there could be, but I think the thing is, we're not telling a real estate agent that they can't say for sale on the sign.
Right.
And we're not telling them that their sign has to only say this or cannot say that. So we're not regulating the language on the sign, but we are, I think, fairly based on our legal understanding of it, and we'll of course get it legal checked. It might be appropriate still to call out a sign characteristic. And the characteristic of a real estate sign is placed on property that's for sale or for lease. And it is temporary in nature, but it is different than other types of temporary signs, and that's why we kind of try to create.
And it could be different at the time this was a Jordan Remus ruling.
Yeah, so I think that's one we can certainly revisit it. I mean, we're just bringing it up tonight to refamiliarize yourselves with it, and we would like to see ideally by late summer, a potential text amendment to the code, so we can implement what we think are frankly, citizen, business-friendly standards, other than what we have right now.
And what would the cutoff be for a land use application for a sign?
You mean, what would we?
What would the threshold be before it became a land use application?
Frankly, if it required variance, because you're putting still dimensional standards in place, or you're putting citing standards in place. Those are things you can still check through a review, and we would still do a review of signs. The thing is, by treating it like a land use application, that means staff then has to generate paperwork, notices of decision, it's a much more formal review process. So we wouldn't treat it like it, the only time we treat it as a land use application is if you're just using a spitballing number, if you're limited to 32 square feet, somebody wants to do a 64 square feet. Our experience, so at that point, it becomes a land use application.
Right. I just think that often when a sign goes up, there appears to be, or prior experiences, there's sometimes just a little community backlash.
There can be. At the same rate, though, a lot of signs go up, but they never actually get a sign permit right now. So I think we would suggest that many businesses ignore the standards as they are right now and just put it up. And I think what we're trying to suggest is, it might just be easier to highlight what those standards are, and what is compliant with the standards, have pretty straightforward, simple process to what you can do. Here's your conventions, pay your sign permit fee, and give us a rendering of what it looks like, where it will go, boom, you're done. Not for us then to enter it into a complex system to do a thorough review, and then to generate paperwork saying, we have reviewed it, here's your notice of decision, yada, yada. Because right now, we don't even inform neighboring properties when those signs. Handle what we call type one procedure right now, so it's basically a staff review, but with no name verification.
But I mean, like, some of them then come back and say, why wasn't I notified about this?
That depends on the sign, I presume, I presume if you put a for sale sign on your car window when it's parked on a street, the permit is not required.
Right, but no, what we're talking about is none of them would be land use applications.
But you still have standards, you're not parting ways or throwing away standards. It's much like right now, you will have land use applications to do a home occupation. But you have in the development code standards for home occupations. So if somebody wants to run an online business from their house, they have to get a business license, and they have to abide by the standards you have in the development code that says you can't have a physical presence, you can't allow for customer parking or anything like that, so those standards still apply. If somebody violates it, it's a code violation, and we handle it through the code compliance process. We're suggesting the same approach for signs. You still have standards in place in the code, you regulate convention, you regulate a period of time for the signs to be up, it's temporary, but you're not requiring a land use permit, which is a much more involved process, requires a lot of staff time, quite frankly.
No, and I know, I'm just looking at signs typically for a hot button, that's all.
Absolutely. And with our new online permitting system, we are able to effectively be able to have folks apply for signs much quicker than they've ever been able to do it, so that's one of the other impetus.
It's so good it can't do some of these, right?
What's that?
So good it can't do some of these. Thank you.
If I recall, we spent a lot of time on this.
We did, spent a lot of time on it.
You did, which is why we're, again, bringing it back to your attention without trying to spend much time tonight. So what you have in front of you is where we left off with it, so we're hoping that we can bring it up to your attention for this summer to have a text amendment, because this is from a staff time management perspective, this is a pretty big deal, even though we're talking about applications, we don't see as much the amount of time and work that goes into it, and how we interface them with businesses. This is a tremendous.
Chris, just a question, did you say that you are in the process of implementing ERGO?
We have ERGO already, yeah.
Okay.
Which I believe Gresham has too.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah. ERGO, yeah. That sounded better. Okay, any other comments on the sign?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Chair Stifson. Yeah, I noticed there's a couple of additions in red regarding inflatable signs. And I'm wondering, I know it's the definition, and then there's a prohibition against them. And I'm wondering, in your sign definition, does a sign require that there be text on it? What I'm thinking is along the lines of inflatables in particular, or if someone has a cluster of helium balloons tied up in front of their store, for example, that's something that's intended to attract business, but is it necessarily a sign? Could it be classified as a sign?
I almost think that says text, message or.
Right, so if it was just effectively a multicolor helium balloons bunched together. Sale or something like that, then it could be a sign, and you're not. I think that's just.
Good question. You have another one, Commissioner Lofa?
No, that was good, but Chris was breaking up pretty badly, I missed more than half of what he was saying.
Your example of like maybe a bunch, bunches of helium balloons meant for decoration would probably be viewed as decorative. But if those balloons, that the name of the business or sale or something like that, then that probably crosses the threshold to the sign.
Right.
Okay, got it.
I think so, yeah. Next week, the city, actually, excuse me, the budget committee will be having its workshops, if anybody is interested in doing that. If you go on the city's website right now, there are several, I guess, recorded presentations that give a little bit of an introduction to the city budget. But for those who wanna see it live via Zoom or in person, we have that option, both options available. Budget meeting meets on Monday night, six. And if there's a need for a second meeting Wednesday, I believe this is scheduled time, same time on Wednesday for next week. You will have a planning commission meeting, a special meeting, two weeks from today, on the 28th. There will be a hearing, and I will stress right now, it will be a contentious hearing. You're gonna have a conditional use modification hearing regarding cell tower. We made mention of this to council earlier today, and we're making it known to you tonight, in case you get any questions or inquiries. Planning commissioners, you know generally what to do, avoid the ex parte contact, and prefer any comments or thoughts to the hearing for that night on the 28th. We also have scheduled on the 28th, the first hearing for the housing needs analysis, which, again, the document which you approved last year by recommended approval last year, and council approved the resolution. We have to go through an ordinance process according to the state, so we're having the ordinance or hearing on the 28th, and then it'll go to city council in May and in June. So those will be the two hearings we have that night.
Council adopted it as a resolution, and it needed to be ordered, so we have to go back through the process again.
Correct. Nothing substantively, though, changed from the last time you looked at it and from now, so really, this should be frankly procedural although, as it's a hearing now, there might be a possibility of additional testimony that has to be considered. So just bear that in mind, but nothing in the documents has changed since the last time you all had seen it. Beyond that, your staff is extremely busy with a variety of projects. Very happy to have Arini Foley back on board, and both Amber and Randy are doing a kick butt job, and we really wanna thank them for their efforts. A lot of exciting projects, some which.
A lot of exciting projects, some which you will hear of in the next few weeks and months ahead. But we remain busy and we appreciate your support and your, your service to the community, it's going to be a busy couple of months for this body. I think that that will yield back unless Amber or Renee, if there's any other notes you want to add.
No?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Except for puppy.
Yeah.
She's asleep.
Smart dog.
She's adding another five pounds.
Honestly, probably, yeah.
Now. Okay, Commissioner Mamoney and Commissioner Wydilla. It looks like your terms are up this June.
Is that right?
Well, it's interesting because this says twenty one. And, um. You and Commissioner Prickett usually work together and she's listed as twenty three.
Okay. Might be a misprint because I was, yeah, because usually it's Marvin and I are together.
Right. And when was the last time you went to the Nuremberg hearing?
I could be wrong, it could be me that's up too.
Okay, so we'll check.
We'll, we'll, we'll double check and let you know, um, by email because the deadlines for filing for committees is coming up soon, so we'll, we'll double check that.
Yeah, if I understand correctly, the deadline is the thirty first, I'm working on my application, um, to be submitted by that deadline for my interest in, uh, continuing to be serving on the, on the committee. That's what my understanding.
Please turn your application in, sir.
Yes, yes, I will, of course, yes.
Okay, we'll check on yours. You don't want to miss the deadline.
And Shirley's as well, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can double check because I think I have it in my, they sent me a. My commission thing, but I thought it was a couple of years ago, so. It could be this year.
Uh, so the other thing is, um, budget starts on Monday. And, uh, this is a really important thing and I encourage you guys to get involved. At least come and comment on things that are, you're passionate about, things that are important to you. Because as you know, there's no way to fund everything. And so just tough decisions have to be made and it's always good to hear what the community feels is important. And where the city should be putting its emphasis. So, um, don't hesitate to call in or attend those meetings. You think these are rough? Never. Okay, um, does anyone have anything before we adjourn? No? Okay, not seeing anybody. Commissioner Wydilla? No? Okay. All right, with that, I'd like to thank everyone for their time and I would especially like to thank, um, Counselor Glanz, Counselor Caswell and Counselor White for their input this evening. Very important, thank you so much for taking the time to be with us and with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
No second to that.
Okay, we had motion a second to adjourn meeting of April fourteenth, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Harry, thank you everyone, we adjourn.
Thank you, everybody, good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.
Night.
Night.